Welcome and call to order. Good evening and welcome to the June 6, 2022 Legislative Action Meeting of the Hattler-Horsham School District Board of School Directors. Please be aware this meeting is being recorded. The opinions expressed by any member of the public do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Hattler-Horsham School District Board of School Directors and are solely those of the presenter. The Hattler-Horsham School District Board hereby expressly disclaims any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public. Can we please have the flag salute?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please have roll call?
Teresa Brown, present. Tara Connor-Halston, present. Susan Hansinger-Hoff, here. Maggie Kistner, here. D.J. Schultz, present. Erin Stroop. Erin Whalen, here. Jennifer Wilson, here. David Brown, here. We have eight board members present.
Thank you. There was an executive session immediately preceding the meeting to discuss matters to be considered on this evening's agenda and to discuss school safety matters. The meeting lasted approximately 55 minutes. Home and School Association recognition. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening. Each year, it is our pleasure to recognize the hardworking and dedicated committed members of the Hattler-Horsham School District's Home and School Associations. We are so appreciative of your time and your talents, and much that we do would not be possible if it were not for your efforts. And so I'm going to introduce our building principals, who will acknowledge and recognize our home and school leadership teams, and also present a book that will be dedicated in your honor in each of our school libraries, beginning with Dr. Alicia G., Principal of Blair Mill Elementary School.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. It's my privilege and pleasure to be able to introduce to you three of our current board members from our HSA at Blair Mill. I'm very appreciative for them partnering with me as their new principal this year, and really just very dedicated families. They're the ones that are out there at nine o'clock at night cleaning up the dunk tank as we were doing on Friday, and then they're the next morning to make sure the dunk tank is still there and gonna get picked up. So I just appreciate everything that they've done this year, beginning in September, multiple events throughout the year, and really supporting our children in every way that they possibly could. So I just want to thank them, and on behalf of our HSA, tonight is Beth Maffa, one of our co-presidents, stand up, and Deb Jasner and Krista Trimble, who are all, who are our co-treasure. So thank you, all three of you, for all of your work. Come on up. And just, just a quick personal note, they are full-service HSA. They even bought me, brought me breakfast when I spent the night at the school after the tornado. So thank you so much for everything that you've done. I, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate everything that you do for the kids at Blair Mill. You are truly, all of you, all of the board members, just class act and so dedicated to our kids. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. G. And now, Mr. Steve Glaze, Principal at Hollowell Elementary School.
Thank you very much. Really great to be here and to be able to honor, we have several members of our home and school here tonight. I am truly indebted to these people. They work so incredibly hard. They do so much for our school and have given so much of their time, and over the years, not just this year, but over the years. And, and as you can imagine, this year was challenging in a variety of ways. Our ability to be able to hold events in person and to be able to rethink what we did, to be able to find new ways to engage our families. You did all that and more. I could not be more proud of the three of you and all of our officers. So I have our president, Lisa Johnston-Ball, our vice president, Stephanie Black, and one of our co-treasureers, Tara Dwayne.
Thank you. And now I'd like to invite Ms. Kelly Sendl, Principal at Crooked Billet Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to echo what Dr. G. and Mr. Glaze shared. We have, we're still working, as we've merged with Penny Pack a couple of years ago, so we're still working to rebuild our HSA and determine which events work in our brand-new building. So it's been, it's been a great year with these three wonderful ladies. I believe Nicole Reitner, one of our co-presidents, just came down. She's probably coming from another event that she was running elsewhere. Very busy person. So I would like to thank Nicole Reitner and Karen Greenberg and Christine Schlauchter couldn't make it tonight, but we're also very appreciative of all the work that they have done. Thank you.
Nicole is always right on time, literally. And now I'd like to invite Ms. Dr. Bob Campman, Assistant Principal at Simmons Elementary School.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bob Campman. I am the proud Assistant Principal of Simmons Elementary School. Unfortunately, due to other commitments, probably working for our school in other ways, our leadership of our home and school could not be here tonight. But I must tell you, without their tireless work, our school would not be the success this year that it has been through them. So with much appreciation, I'd accept this award on their behalf.
Thank you. And next, Mr. John Kircher, Principal at Keith Valley Middle School.
I'd just like to say for the elementary, HSA's in attendance, you can't leave tonight without talking to me about signing you up for Keith Valley's Home and School Association. But like my colleagues, I would echo, just thank you. We would not be the successful school operation that we are without the commitment of our HSA volunteers. In fact, we're running a Color Battle fundraiser, and we were neck-deep in that today with a lot of volunteers. So again, so thank you for all that you do. Like Bob, no one, one of our officers couldn't be here tonight. They're all running other activities. So I will also graciously accept the book on their behalf.
Thank you. And next, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Dennis Williams, Principal here at Hattler-Horsham High School.
Thank you very much. I appreciate this opportunity. I believe that our home and school is probably in the same boat. For those of you that are not aware, and I'll introduce everybody, we just kind of celebrated our Super Bowl of the year. We had our prom and our post-prom event. For those of you that may not be aware, it is a $30,000 event, and the whole purpose of that event is to make sure that our students are safe, have an opportunity to kind of hang out and relax and enjoy each other's company. We give away a number of prizes. So I'd imagine that many of our Home and School Association people are still catching up on sleep, as we, we left the high school here at 6:30, almost seven o'clock a.m. So it was a great event, and it would not be possible without them. But just to introduce our president, Carolyn Kushner, Vice President Linda Greenberg, Maureen Larson, and also Wendy Kepphart, who serve as our treasurer and bookkeeper, and our secretary Amanda Salters. I'm not sure anybody is here. They are not. But again, they're probably working on some other event and planning for graduation and our senior bash, but they're also assisting us with that process. So I'll accept on their behalf. And thank you so much to everyone, all of our parents and all of our community members who assisted. The event that we worked on, on Saturday would not be possible without full community support. So thank you very much, and I appreciate it. I'll accept this one on their behalf.
I just told Mr. Williams, don't go far, because next he is going to acknowledge our high school senior award winners.
Thank you again. This is always one of my favorite times of year, because it's an opportunity to recognize students who have just been outstanding in terms of their leadership, their commitment, their dedication and their commitment, not just to our high school, but to our school district community. So this evening, we're actually going to introduce a number of students. We're gonna ask them to come up so that they can be recognized. The great part about this is you'll get an opportunity to see the role that they play within our school, within our high school building. And I also think it's pretty cool just to see what their next steps are and where they're going next. Some of you in this audience, whether you are board members or individuals who have watched some of these students grow up, a lot of times at the high school level, there's a disconnect, right? They graduate from high school, and then what's next? What happens next? So we're actually gonna share some of that with you today. Student council, we don't do a student council president or vice president. We do a student council leadership team, and it's a great group of students who have helped push some of the activities and events that we've done throughout the school year, feed a friend, and a number of things. So first, I'd like to introduce Tarek Alsebal. And Tarek will be attending Temple University and their honors program. I don't believe Tarek is here with us this evening. I know there was another activity that he was engaged in. Next. There we go. Abby Keenan, Keegan. Abby is also one of our student council representatives. She'll be attending George Washington University next year and will be majoring in biology. And I do see one student who is actually here with us this evening. And that is Martine Royds. Martine will be attending NYU next year. Martine, why don't you come on up? For those of you that are attending graduation, and I hope you do, whether you attend in person or whether you check us out with our HHTV livestream, you'll also have the opportunity to hear Martine speak, as she will be one of our graduation speakers. So congratulations, Martine, for all the commitment and dedication that you've had to our high school. Next, we have our president, our class president for the class of 2022, and he will be attending Swarthmore College, Mr. Eric Braumberg, who's sitting right here. Come on up, Eric. Eric has been pretty monumental in terms of the work of the class. He became the class president last year, kind of in the midst of COVID. And I remember our move-up ceremony last year and, and talking about what we had planned for the class of 2022, because things were a little, were a little crazy, right? We didn't know what, what this year was going to look like. But Eric has helped this class navigate a lot of cool things, and, and without his leadership and the leadership of the people who work with him, this year wouldn't be as special as it is. So Eric, congratulations, and we wish you luck at Swarthmore. Next, we have, you may want to stand up, because she's gonna have to get out. Next, we have our National Honor Society President, Grace Collett, and Grace will be attending James Madison University. Give Grace a hand. For those of you that are not aware, our National Honor Society is steeped heavily in terms of community service, scholarship, leadership, and that, those things wouldn't be possible without Grace's leadership. Watching her stand up here on this stage just a few months ago and introduce and, and help induct brand-new National Honor Society students to the program has been outstanding. And I know that she will have an outstanding career and do very, very big things at James Madison. So congratulations. And our high header yearbook. I take for granted that everybody gets an opportunity to see this. Typically, it is the parents of the students who are graduating and parents of kids who are, who are in our high school. So the community doesn't necessarily get an opportunity to see our yearbook. But over the years, I would argue with any one of my colleagues in any school in Montgomery County, Bucks County, Delaware County, and beyond, that we have the finest yearbook ever printed. And that was a, a pretty challenging effort in a year where things were a little crazy, where things were kind of up in the air. So I want to introduce the individuals who played a significant role, and their advisor, Ms. Lauren Nash, who I see here in the audience, to capture, you know, what, what, what high school has been like in the face of a pandemic and coming out of a pandemic. And this class of 22, 2022 is pretty special. So I'd like to introduce some individuals. Sarah Breefeld will be heading to FIT. Abby Davis will be going to Penn State University. Alice Hall, who you've seen up here, she was up here a couple of weeks ago, she'll be heading to MIT. And we also have Morgan Long, who I see in the audience. Come on up, Morgan. Morgan. Morgan will be heading to James Madison University as well. When you talk about individuals who are well-rounded and exactly what a high school principal is looking for, this is her, right? You may recall back in November, when we were dealing with some issues and, and the school district kind of needed a voice of reason, and we talk about student voice, she's the one who stood up here at this podium and talked about what we really, really needed as a high school. And those words were extremely important, and we took those words to heart. And without people like Morgan, there's a lot of stuff that we can't get done. So thank you so much, Morgan. I appreciate your leadership and commitment. If we can go back one more. Can we go back? Okay. All right. Next, we have Morgan Kirby. I didn't see Morgan today, so I don't believe Morgan is with us, but she will also be heading to the University of Tennessee. And then finally, I do see her out here, Abby Rosing, who will be heading to the University of Tennessee as well. I get an opportunity every once in a while to read students' college essays. I will tell you, her college essay is the best essay I've ever read in my 16 years as an administrator. I have no doubt that she's gonna be successful. I have no doubt that she's gonna make a difference, and the University of Tennessee is extremely lucky to have Abby Rosing. Thank you, Abby. Now, if you're not doing anything next Monday, we hope that you will join us. We're, we're outside. The, the goal is that we're outdoors, so we don't, we don't give tickets. So come on out and join us as we celebrate the class of 2022. In the past, what we have done is if we have, you know, unfortunately, bad weather, we will move it indoors. We've made the decision with the, with the support of our superintendent that we will no longer do that, because that limits the number of people who can actually participate, all the individuals who have played a, a significant role in the lives of our graduates. So if, if we have unfortunate bad weather on Monday, we will move it to Tuesday. If we have bad weather on Tuesday, we will move it to Wednesday. If we have bad weather on Wednesday, we will move it to Thursday. But whoever it is that you pray to, I ask that you pray for good weather on Monday, all right? Because this class deserves nothing less than the best. And the hope is that on June 13th at 6:30, we have an opportunity to celebrate this class of 2022 and send them out the right way. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Can we move on to the introduction of the Hattler-Horsham School District's School Board Representatives? Dr. Abeslog?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to share that we are adding a student voice to our school board structure by including non-voting student representatives in both Grade 11 and 12 to our board governance process. The students will serve in an advisory capacity to the superintendent, administration, and the school board, representing the interests of students in the Hattler-Horsham School District. Student board representatives will communicate, they will communicate student perspectives, represent their peers, and participate in school governance alongside of the school board members. In addition to gathering student perspectives to share, representatives will also report board deliberations and actions to the student body. Many students applied for the position formally, and these students were asked to submit a formal letter of interest, a secure letters of recommendation from their teacher, and then participate in a full interview with myself and building administration. As a result of that, we have four student reps that I'm proud to announce today. They were super impressive through this process and just are gonna be wonderful advocates for student voice. And I'm pleased to welcome both juniors and seniors. While we have four reps, we were, we're gonna ensure that we have both, at least one junior and one senior at each board meeting to provide voice at the meetings. The existence of these representative positions is governed by school board policy 004, which is called membership. And I'm pleased to introduce our student representatives. So if, if they could just stand when announced, and we'll give them a round of applause at the end and welcome them. So first, our rising seniors in the class of 2023, who will serve for the next calendar year, Arena Garfulmina and Matthew Wingen. And they'll be joined by our two members of the class of 2024, who will serve a two-year term for the next two years, and then next year, we will replace our outgoing seniors with two new incoming juniors. But our two members of the class of 2024 are Harper Serene and Arianna Bertrand. Congratulations to these four students. I'm really excited about you serving in this role, and I'm very much looking forward to working closely with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Abeslog, and welcome to all four of you. Next is public comment. It is the time for public to offer their comments on agenda items only. All their usual procedures for public comments as follows apply. State your name, address, that means municipality of residence. If you wish to speak during the public comments session, we ask that you please sign in in the sign-in sheet located in the front of the auditorium. Your name will be called in the order that your name appears on the sign-in sheet. Once your name is called, we ask that you please come to the microphone that will be located in the front of the auditorium. Please limit your comment to three minutes, and also remember that it is the board's practice to not engage in dialogue with speakers. We'll start with Dr. Joe Nassif.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to make my comments. I have a few comments to make tonight in reference to your resolution on gun registration and a so-called assault weapon ban. My first and most important point is what have you been doing these last few years? If you're waiting and allowing a tragedy to happen in our schools, why do I pose this question? Because you and your predecessors have done nothing to really prevent tragedy. What to do is the following. Harden the target, that is the schools, so it does not happen here. It is well-known that mental disease and just plain evil looks to weakness and an easy soft touch to further its agenda. The people who do these unspeakable acts are usually not stupid. They go where they can act out their evil thoughts easily and without resistance. To paraphrase the president, for God's sake, do something. However, I emphasize, do something real. Rationalize without hysterics and evaluate all the facts. Hire trained armed guards and/or police. Limit access in entrances with doors that only open out. Make sure your employees know, under penalty of discharge, that they may not prop open egress doors for any reason, as in Uvalde. Train, even though this is an unspeakable thought for some, and arm those teachers who, because of their responsibility to keep children safe, will assume this responsibility. If a teacher, as has been done in the past, will stand in front of a godless attacker to shield the students, I have no doubt that, once trained, said teacher would use a weapon to save the students. The teacher is the first responder. For God's sake, harden the school, for only a good person with a gun can stop the bad and evil person with a gun or any other weapon. One other comment, get professional help in hardening the target, which of course is the school. And I emphasize, reading the acclaimed author on the role of firearms in a free society, Professor John Lott. All this can be accomplished in a short period, whereas unconstitutional, useless laws fail. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nassif. Tom Johnson? Tom Johnson? Penny Johnson? Okay, thank you. Are there any virtual comments? Dr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. President. The first virtual comment is from Katie Betancourt, Marietta Drive, Ambler, PA. My name is Katie Betancourt, and I have two students at Hattler-Horsham School District Schools. Like all parents, I am continually shocked at the school shootings and the lack of governmental response. I will not blame our schools for these shootings. They are the victims, not the aggressors here. It's time our schools step up and say enough. We have secured the schools, we have added security, done active shooter training. What we haven't done is anything to stop the ease at which individuals can get these weapons of mass destruction. I applaud our school board for speaking up for our students and for creation of this resolution to ask the politicians to do their jobs to protect our students. Our school board is doing what needs to be done to protect our students with the resolution. The next comment is from Jan Corwin Anger, Lois Road, Ambler. Dear HH School Directors, thanks for presenting this resolution in support of our students and teachers. North Penn and Colonial, Plymouth White Marsh, have passed similar resolutions. The next comment is from Suzanne Doherty, Lincoln Avenue, Hattler. To the Hattler-Horsham School Board, thank you so much for advocating for common sense gun legislation to try to restrict access to weapons of war. These guns are not needed. Access to these weapons has provided countless troubled young men the firepower to extinguish innocent lives. This must stop now. Other reasonable changes include requiring safety training. No one should have access to a weapon without sufficient instruction. Licensing. Should a weapon be found in the possession of someone without a license, charges can be brought and other restrictions can occur, like losing your driver's license or professional license. Only after safety training can a license be issued. Universal background checked. We can track every click on a website or purchase made, then we can track if someone should be eligible to own a lethal weapon, no exceptions. Thanks for being a voice of reason. That ends the virtual public comments.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Can we move on to minutes, looking for approval for the minutes of May 16th Legislative Action Meeting? Do I have a motion?
Second, Jen Wilson.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to human resource action items, looking for approval of the personnel action items for human resources, A and B, approve special services summer staff employment and approve compensation for teachers providing alternate instruction, alternative instruction. Do I have a motion?
So move, Jen Wilson. Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
If I may, we approve some HR action items, and we're, we got, while we welcome all of our staff members and excited about the new staff members. and excited about the new staff members joining us, we do have two newly appointed staff members who are here with us. We'd like to welcome Mr. Charles Cathers, who was just appointed as our new activities and athletic director at the high school. We had an outstanding pool of candidates for this position and are pleased to welcome Mr. Cathers to our team. He's the current athletic director at Central Bucks South High School and has district oversight over the athletic programs at eight secondary schools in Central Bucks. He also has been, has worked in the Happer-Horsham School District in the past, both as a classroom teacher and a coach. In his time at Central Bucks and through the interview process, he demonstrated that he was a student-centered educator who was willing to and had demonstrated experience in working with students, coaches, sponsors, and families to grow and develop programs in a way that prioritize students having a safe, well-rounded, positive experience through activities and athletics. We are very pleased to welcome Mr. Charles Cathers, if you want to stand and be recognized. Also joining us this evening on the agenda was Ms. Linda Childs. Ms. Childs will be a new counselor here at Happer-Horsham High School. That too, we had an outstanding pool of candidates. We had over 80 candidates apply for that position. It was an excellent pool. Through that position, Ms. Childs emerged as an accomplished and celebrated high school counselor from Hunterton Central High School, Regional High School in New Jersey, where she was the New Jersey Governor's Educator of the Year in 2019-20. She emerged from a deep pool of candidates and will be a wonderful, student-centered addition to our team. So please welcome Ms. Linda Childs.
Moving on to Special Services Action Items, looking for a motion for A, Student Settlement Agreement, and also B, Student Settlement Agreement.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Business Office Action Items, looking for approval of A, revised 2022-2023 School Year Calendar, B, PDE 4605 Residences, C, PDE 4605 Residences, and D, PDE 4605 Residences.
So moved, DJ Schultz.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Section E, which is the resolution. Tonight, we are taking a position on an issue that is at the forefront of our collective minds. Mass shootings take place daily in our country, and as we saw over the weekend, we are not immune from them in Pennsylvania. It is important that the community, which entrusts us with their children, as well as our elected leaders, know where we stand and that we need help. We are responsible to provide a safe, educational environment, and we spend millions of taxpayers' dollars, including security personnel, threat assessment initiatives, armed intruder drills, student mental health programs, to protect our students and staff. But there are limits to what we, as a school board, as a school district, can do. The threat of someone bringing a gun into one of our schools with the intent of mass murder is real, and we see from countless school shootings across our country. There is clear evidence of what works to help reduce gun violence. Both federal and state gun laws need to change. Therefore, tonight, we are voting on this resolution as a plea for help from those that can truly make a difference in protecting our students by enacting common sense gun laws. The resolution states, this is a joint resolution supporting legislation to further regulate firearms, including an assault weapons ban from the Board of School Directors of Happer-Horsham School District and the Happer-Horsham Education Association. Whereas since 1999, there have been 331 school shootings on K-12 campuses during the school day, bringing at least 185 children and educators, including the Sandy Hook Elementary Massacre on December 14th, 2012, where 21st grade children and six educators were murdered, the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Mass Shooting on February 14th, 2018, killing 17 students and educators, and the Robb Elementary School Mass Murder of 19 children and two educators on May 24th, 2022. And whereas at least 311,000 students were present during these shootings, and whereas there have, has been an average of more than five school shootings per month in 2022, and whereas assault weapons, as defined by Pennsylvania House Bill 770 of 2021, have been used in the majority of the school shootings, including Sandy Hook Elementary School, Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, and Robb Elementary School. And whereas the federal assault weapons ban of 1994 was in place, mass shootings decreased by 43%. And whereas the federal assault weapons ban of 94 expired without renewal or replacement in 2004. And whereas deaths due to gun massacres dropped by 43%, while the federal assault weapons ban of 1994 was in effect and rose by 239% after its expiration. And whereas in 2004, at the expiration of the federal assault weapons ban of 1994, there were approximately 8.5 million AR-15 semiotic rifles in circulation in the United States of America. And on this date, there are approximately 19.8 million AR-15 semi-automatic rifles in circulation in this country. Whereas seven states in the country have an assault weapons ban, but Pennsylvania does not, and whereas the district is entrusted with the health and safety of our students and district employees, and whereas current Pennsylvania law prohibits local municipalities from enacting regulations on firearms, and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of the Happer-Horsham School District and the Happer-Horsham Education Association call upon Congress and the Pennsylvania General Assembly to enact legislation that further regulates firearms, included but not limited to legislation that prohibits the possession, use, control, manufacture, and sale of assault weapons, as defined by Pennsylvania House Bill 770 of 2021, as well as high-capacity magazines and bump stocks. Looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I have a comment. Tara Connor-Halston. I just want to say the loss of any life to violence, let alone a child's, is tragic, no matter whether it's in school, in a car accident with a drunk driver, anything. The events that have taken place in Texas and Buffalo, along with so many others, are truly heinous. All of that said, this board has no power to regulate firearms or alter amendments. We do not make laws. This resolution may make some feel better, but it will in no way change anything. Criminals do not obey laws. Criminals do not obey amendments. This is taking the rights away from law-abiding citizens. I will be voting no on this, as this is outside of the scope of the board's purpose. But I do hope that we can focus on other safety measures that we are physically capable of doing and have the authority to do to keep our kids safe. And there are many different options that other schools have used and that we've even been suggested to use. So there are other options, and I hope we do look into those. I do think that we should not be setting a precedent of passing politically motivated, non-binding resolutions of any We were all sworn in to this position to uphold the Constitution. The Second Amendment is in the Constitution.
One of the number-one principles for governance and leadership is to advocate earnestly. We are advocating earnestly by passing resolutions and calling on our politicians to pass laws, because we cannot pass them ourselves. It is a principle that is laid out as a member of a school board, that we are allowed to advocate for the health and safety of our students and our staff. So this is perfectly within the right of a school board member to advocate for these things. We are not passing any laws. We are asking the people who are elected to pass these laws to look at this.
The laws that you're asking to be passed are unconstitutional.
I think if we want to individually write a letter to our senator and state that IMA School Board Director, that is completely within your right, but I don't think as a board, we can say to the legislature that we should do that. We don't have that position. I believe we don't have that position. Individually, we do.
A resolution is a recommendation. It is not a, it is not a policy, it's a recommendation. And anything that we can do to protect our children, I think we should do.
I agree with that statement as well. Our children's safety should be a priority. It should not come second. Parents should be certain that they can send their kids to school and will not be gunned down. That's imperative for a healthy learning environment. And I know our schools are doing everything they can and within their power. This is something that's outside of our power, and we should, we should support our elected officials to do the right thing and pass these laws.
Individually.
As far as safety, I do, I do agree that we need to worry about the safety of our children, along with the education of them. There are many safety concerns. We have drunk drivers on our roads and in our school zones, but we don't have a policy that prohibits us from hiring people with a DUI. So there are many things that we need to do. I just don't think that this is going to be productive.
I agree that we need to do whatever we can to protect our kids. I know we all think that. But we cannot go against the constitutional rights of all citizens. There are things we can be doing, but people don't want to talk about it, like letting people, letting administrators or teachers who are currently concealed carrying out in public, very comfortable with a firearm, to be in our schools. They're our line of defense. They're our first line of defense. That would be something we could talk about. But to go against the Constitution, assault weapon, as defined by this bill, basically takes almost every gun out of our hands. You're going to be taking law-abiding citizens, making them defenseless. Criminals, they don't give a crap about laws.
The shooters in the schools that we addressed were law-abiding citizens until they massacred children. That's not, so saying a criminal won't obey laws means we can't, we can't pass laws? That means we would be lawless. That's, that's ridiculous. That's not even feasible.
This, when we, when we talk about passing laws, we're not passing laws. We're suggesting, again, as a resolution, it troubles me to no end that we feel that entrusting, being entrusted with our children's well-being, providing a safe educational environment is political. That's disturbing at the highest level. Excuse me. This is a deliberation. If you wish to speak, you can sign. Other than that, that's what this is, this is here.
I don't see how just, I think we have more power within ourselves, locally, internally, to secure our schools than a law that is generalized. You're taking guns away. That, that's great if you approve of that. If you don't, but locking our schools down, training our teachers, security systems, things like that, that can be targeted to our individual needs, would have a better productivity or better safety than just a law that you're hoping will come through, through the legislature. We should be able to change what we can change. We can change our own systems. We can better our own systems.
And we have done a lot to better our systems, which, which is great. I mean, you know, we heard from Mr. Kerrigan this evening as well, of a lot of the things that we've done to assist with that. Numbers are numbers. You know, when the assault weapons ban of 94 was around, things decreased by 43%. When it went away, it increased by 239%. Those are numbers. Those are real. So people can, you know, not, not agree with facts, but facts are just what they are. Sadly, today, those things aren't always understood.
Well, I think, no sane person goes into a school and shoots up a school, correct? So don't you think, as much as a shooting is horrendous, don't you think the root problem would be mental illness? So we need to focus more on mental illness as opposed to targeting the end result. Why don't we start from the beginning of the problem?
I think it's a, I think it's a, I'm sorry.
I think that we, we are at a point where we've seen shootings in a church, in a supermarket, in a school, and on and on, a movie theater. All we're saying is that we want to make a statement that says they should put some laws in order. That's all we're saying. And I 100 believe that we need to have laws in order. And you know, if it hasn't affected us, should we turn our heads and say, let's think about it?
I think, I think it's a multi-pronged approach. We're not just, first of all, you know, I think there's great, grave misunderstanding that we're trying to pass a law. We're not, we're, we're suggesting that people look at it and pass the law, right? Significant difference. But there's also, you know, looking at what we can do internally at the same time. There needs to be more than one approach to things. So that's, I think, what this resolution is stating, and...
Mr. Chair, I move the original question.
Yes, the motion would be to accept the resolution.
Second.
Can there, can there be, and we had a first and a second. That's the reread. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
This vote is a motion to approve the resolution. Teresa Brown.
Yes.
Yes. Tara Connor-Halston.
No.
Susan Huntsinger-Hoff.
Yes.
Maggie Kistner.
No.
DJ Schultz.
Yes.
Erin Whalen.
No.
Jennifer Wilson.
Yes.
David Brown.
Yes.
The resolution passes 5 to 3.
I would like to request that that resolution state, when you send it, that the entire board did not agree. I don't care if you put 6-3, or only have those that approved of it, sign it. But I don't want it insinuated that I agreed in any way.
That certainly can be done. Thank you. Did you hear that?
No.
I said, I said, "That certainly can be done." Also, I wanted to read a statement for, from Board Member Strup, who was unable to attend this evening. He states, "I regret not being able to attend tonight's meeting. Gun violence is a pervasive problem in our country, including our schools. I am in favor of any resolution, including the resolution of this evening's agenda, designed to support dialogue and change at the state level regarding proactively doing everything we can to help protect our students, staff, and community." Just getting my bearings. Thank you very much. Moving on to Committee Reports. Curriculum Committee Report, Ms. Huntsinger-Hoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Committee has not met yet this month. We will meet next week on June 14th at 3:00 PM via Zoom. Items on the agenda will include a report on professional development, the field trip report, and an update on the student wellness survey. The update on the ongoing social studies review will be presented in September, not June, as previously targeted. The work will proceed as scheduled over the summer. All are invited to read the curriculum and instruction portion of the June 2022 Leadership Report for further details. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huntsinger-Hoff. Facilities Committee Report, Ms. Wilson.
I have no report.
Finance Committee Report, Ms. Brown.
I have no report tonight.
HR Report, Tara, Ms. Connor-Halston.
I have nothing to at this time. Thank you.
Policy Committee Report, Ms. Schultz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The Policy Committee met via Zoom on Wednesday, June 1st, and highlights from that meeting are as follows. We reviewed the status of the search as policy number 226, which passed for first read during the May Board Action Meeting. The review team included, including our solicitor, Ms. Johnson, added some language to address some of the board's questions, and the committee felt the changes addressed those concerns. The changes did not change the intent of the policy, it clarified the intent. Following this report, Mr. President, I'll ask that we call for a vote on that second read. We then discussed policy listings under review. The committee review for policy number 121 Field Trips and 231 Special Events and Class Trips has been moved into the fall to give time to create and include ARs addressing new online forms. There was no community or committee member comments. For new business, we discussed next year's meeting format. We decided to continue policy meetings on the first Wednesdays of the month. For new business, we discussed next year's meeting format. We decided to continue policy meetings on the first Wednesdays of the month via Zoom. This recommend, recommendation was forward to the administration to be included in the district calendar. For more details about the meeting, they can be reviewed in the minutes, documents attached to today's meeting agenda on Board Docs. Thank you so much. Mr. President, will you now call for a vote?
Yes, uh, the Policy Committee is recommending approval of policy 226, searches as a secondary reading. First policy was approved at the first read at May 16th, 2022 Legislative Action Meeting. Is there a motion to approve policy 226 as a second read?
I have a question.
Sorry, let's try that again.
I will move to approve that.
Thank you.
Second.
A second.
Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to clarify, um, we've definitely discussed this many times. Uh, the Policy Committee has made many changes that I'm very impressed by. Um, this was discussed. I know that we do have public that is concerned, as I was myself. Um, and I would like to ask that, uh, the superintendent, uh, if you're willing to explain what you would explain to us as far as, um, searching underneath clothes beyond pockets for the public, so they can understand that that is not going to be normal policy and when and how, and who has the authority to approve that, please.
Uh, sure. Um, so in general, first, the revisions to this policy have, in my opinion, been significant improvements and resulted in honoring the rights of students in a much, in a much, um, in a much better fashion. Um, there is language about, um, the, the, um, authority for a administrator under certain circumstances to have a more invasive search. However, the, the situations where that would practically occur are, are almost nil. Um, but the language that was included in the policy would be, A, requiring, uh, a specific approval, uh, from the superintendent or designated. And the second part is if only if there was an emergent, immediate, time-sensitive health and safety threat. Um, so if there was a concern through a normal search process, that, uh, there was still an item of, of concern um, that was, that was not revealed through, through a standard less invasive search, the procedure would be to, uh, bring the authorities in and have the police conduct that search. That would happen almost every time. Um, the only situation that the policy does grant is for an action to be taken prior to police arrival if there is a time-sensitive emergency health and safety threat.
Thank you.
That threat would not be, um, something like if you thought they had drugs, but more like a weapon, like a gun, a knife, a bomb type of thing. Am I correct?
That is correct. Yep. Not just having something, illegal contraband on, on person. It would be something that would be, would not, could not wait, could not wait. There would be a threat imminent enough that it could not wait for the arrival of, uh, police to be present.
And am I correct that that would be your decision for that and not random, um, administration that would need to be approved of by you?
Correct. It would have to be approval directly from me, from a, if an administrator were in that position.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Liaison Reports. Eastern Center Arts and Technology, Ms. Connor Halston.
I have nothing new at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Federal Programs Report, Dr. Taylor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to note that the Summer Academy will be held at Hollowell Elementary School, June 27th through the 29th, and that we will be meeting with our Title I Parent Advisory Committee this week. And that ends my update. Thank you.
Thank you. Montgomery County Intermediate Report, Ms. Wilson.
Yes, at our last meeting, we had our retirement appreciation celebration. Um, we also approved, um, our bargaining unit agreement with the MCIU Education Association. Um, and we hired eight new employees and had two administrative changes of status. Um, and our next meeting will be on Wednesday, June 22nd, 2022, at 6:45.
Thank you. Pennsylvania School Board Association Report, Ms. Brown.
Uh, there is no report today.
Superintendent's Report, Dr. Everslog.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to start with a topic that we've already discussed at this, at this meeting, the incident in Uvalde, Texas. Regardless of how we feel politically about what was decided earlier, uh, words cannot express the tremendous grief that our nation is experiencing over the tragic loss of life of 19 children and two teachers at Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas. As a community and a nation, we are deeply saddened. We mourn the tragic loss of lives and those injured. And our deepest sympathies go out to the victims, their families, and the Uvalde community. Please join me for a moment of silence for the Uvalde community. Thank you. At times like this, it's understandable for families to be concerned about safety procedures and protocols that the school is taking to keep our school, our students and staff safe. While we regularly review our safety procedures, the incident has brought additional urgency to the conversation and our review. We have had several follow-up actions regarding our safety procedures, including but not limited to an executive session that was held this evening to update the board on safety measures in place around the district and those that we may need to consider. We've also had conversations with both the Horsham and the Haprow Police Departments to clarify response expectations. And we've gone through some local, uh, school-based review of, of procedures. As Mr. Kerrigan shared with us earlier in a board meeting this year, uh, the district has adopted an ALICE protocol, better known as a Run, Hide, Fight Response to an Incident. Drills since then have been occurring in our buildings, and information has been provided for staff and students about these protocols. Since the Uvalde incident, communication around these has intensified and questions have intensified, and that is, and that makes sense. The drills will be continuing through the end of the school year. And, uh, we also will, uh, we will be starting the school year next year, uh, with those as well. In addition to that, uh, we have, uh, fortified social emotional supports and mental health supports for students, including allocating some ESSA funds, uh, to allow for additional resources at all three levels, uh, for the next school year. And we also have a Safe Schools Committee that's in place to ensure that we are regularly staying on top of the latest recommendations and actions that schools should be taking and that we as a district should be taking. We do not claim to have all the answers for school safety, but you do have a commitment from this administration that we will constantly be looking at ways to improve our school safety for students and staff. Our ears are open. We're willing to partner with our community partners. We're willing to, um, learn of the latest strategies in place. Um, and those are part of the, the mission of the Safe Schools Committee, and I know that, uh, this board is behind that. And as always, we will keep, uh, families up to date with relevant, uh, school safety information. But we thank our families, uh, for their partnership, for their concern, and for our shared concern about all the, uh, lives, students particularly, but students and staff that are in our buildings every day. To switch gears and provide a brief, uh, COVID update, um, unfortunately, uh, while we have been in the midst of end of the year celebrations, the district has also experienced several, uh, classroom COVID outbreaks. We have had six outbreaks since May 25th. Uh, the county health department defines a COVID-19 outbreak as, in a K-12 setting, as three or more cases among student staff without other identified epidemi, epidemiological linkages with onset within 14 days in a single classroom or core group, meaning a classroom, a team, a group, a musical band, for example. When an outbreak occurs, we are required to be, to report that to the county public health. We are required to be, to report that per the Montgomery County Public Health Code. Following the Public Health Code is not a local decision, nor can it be circumvented by the district-approved health and safety plan. When a COVID outbreak occurs in one of our schools, we're required to, to respond in the manner that the Office of Public Health directs. This is neither guidance, nor is it a recommendation. It's a requirement. The county health department has the authority to close a classroom or an outbreak-affected area, but has permitted this, the classroom and school to continue to operate under these, under the conditions that they, uh, say we must follow. And while there may, may be short-term and localized directed masking and testing, it is important to note that all asymptomatic individuals may continue to attend and fully participate in school activities so long as they are adhering to the testing and masking guidelines that were directed by the county health department. Through this, we call and ask, ask plea with our families, quite honestly, for cooperation in those situations. The outbreaks have been challenging to manage. Uh, there's been six of them. Uh, we hope there was not one today, thankfully. We hope we are on the downswing of this latest, uh, surge, uh, but we want to have obviously student participation in our end-of-the-year activities to the extent we possibly can. I'd like to offer congratulations to our Hatters baseball team on a phenomenal season after winning the league championship and qualifying for the PIAA State Tournament in dramatic fashion last Friday. Uh, the Hatters lost a heartbreaking game this afternoon, eight to seven, to the District Three champion Warwick High School. But the Hatters had a terrific season. They're literally on their way back now, and one of the passing along the congratulations on their great season in qualifying for the state tournament. And, uh, June is Pride Month, and during Pride Month, we reflect on the progress we've made, and the work still needs to be done for equal rights and full inclusion and acceptance of everyone in the LGBTQ community. In Haprow-Horsham School District, we want all students and families to know that all are welcome here. And as Mr. Williams shared earlier, last Friday, the class of 2022 celebrated their senior prom, had a great evening, and celebrated their post-prom here at the high school. And next Monday, uh, the 13th, will be celebrating commencement and the graduation of the class of 2022. This, along with all of the festive end-of-the-year events in our schools, are reminders of the accomplishments and rites of passage of our students. It's been wonderful seeing the incredible community support for these events and see so many engaged families in our schools. We congratulate our students on these important milestones and wish them well in their future success. Looking forward to graduation on Monday. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Everslog. Moving on to public comment. This is the time for public to offer their comments on agenda and non-agenda items. All their usual procedures for public comments continue, starting with Barbara Murphy.
Good evening. I want to thank the three board members who are actually standing up for our constitutional rights. Tonight, I have served each one of you with a letter of intent to file claim against your school insurance liability policy that is held by a risk management company in lieu of your individual liability bonds that are required by state law for every person who is elected or appointed to government or public office. According to your policy, it is the duty of the policy holder, in the event a person files a letter of intent against you for wrongful acts, claims, or suits copied from your insurance company policy. You will be deemed to be aware of and have knowledge of an occurrence or wrongful acts of the date that your legal department, risk management department, claim administrator, or any of your elected, appointed, or employed officials receives notice of such occurrence of wrongful acts, results in the establishment of a reserve, or would reasonably require the establishment or reserve for ultimate net loss under coverage Part A, loss under coverage Part B, which equals or exceeds 33% of the relevant retained limit that involves any of the following class actions or punitive class actions. You might not realize this yet, but each of you is personally liable for a predetermined amount stated in your policy for damages per claim. In your policy, each occurrence is one claim filed against your policy. Each occurrence carries a predetermined deductible that you must pay prior to the insurance company covering the rest of the damages. That means you could lose your house, your cars, your job, your retirement, et cetera, if you do not pay attention. You are in violation of multiple state, federal, and international laws, and based on this most recent case, uh, that occurred in Illinois, you could be facing time in federal prison for your actions if you do not cease and desist. I don't want to see any of this happen to you. All I want is what's best for you and our children. We are done with the board acting as dictators. You are following your own political agenda and taking our children down with you. We, the parents, are the voice of the school. You are public servants. I am giving each of you my intent to serve again, and apparently your solicitor has advised that you do not hold bonds. You do. I hold them in my folder. So before I read, I get to the rest, I just want to leave you with this. Justice is getting what you deserve without favor. Social justice is getting what you don't deserve because you are favored. I have posters that I will be leaving so you can take a look at what teachers are planting in the schools and inviting kids into their social media, which is completely unacceptable as far as abortion, LGBTQ, making fun of people of opposite political parties. We're done with it. So I will be leaving your intent right here for each one of you. Thank you, along with the Constitution.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Catherine Laniff, Lanifee. I apologize for the pronunciation.
My name is Catherine Nace of 519 Lower State Road, and I have some comments to make, but Mrs. Murphy gave me these to give to you with her.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight to discuss the many issues plaguing our district on behalf of my daughter and my grandchildren. And I'm going to just list them. The LGBTQ agenda that you have in all your schools, equity and diversity curriculum, DEI and SEL, keeping the Christian group out of the multicultural fair when there were Muslim and Jewish groups, masking, keeping kids out of schools for a full year until April 2021, and then going hybrid, equity hiring policy, not credentials of the person, bringing in Siobhan Norris, Nefertiti Strickland, without looking into those credentials, continuing membership to the School Board Association with Heather Bennett, the equity slash inclusion, illegal search of kids with two adults, books in the library that are not appropriate slash LGBTQ, PCR testing of students on a weekly basis for sports, weekly PCR testing of unvaxxed teachers, teachers with public accounts that are super left-wing, and students that are invited to their accounts, as with teacher Chris Baker. Siobhan Norris, the Montgomery County IU, did a post, did a podcast with her. They are, of course, into the equity narrative, but she is a big proponent of implicit bias. She is not a psychologist. She has a partial education in biology and dance is her thing, working in various dance companies. She believes it's her job to teach children how to use dance slash creative expression to deal with their traumas. I am not sure really what makes her qualified to be in our schools, other than she was teaching dance in a charter school, and then went to different training sessions that give her supposed credentials to teaching this as well as equity. Post-support, she posts support of BLM activists. The other person you should be aware of is from HHEF, is Nefertiti Strickland. Looked into her as well. She has a military background and was brought in to supposedly support STEM, which I don't have a problem with. What I do have a problem with is that she is the founder of Teachers Reimagining Today's Resources. Part of that is what she calls the D2D, or Designed to Disrupt and Reimagine Education. As I am sure you are aware, the reimagine is a big part of the Biden regime slash deep state, and one of the key words they all use when talking about these issues. Heather Bennett is the Director of Equity Services at the PA School Boards Association. The fact that HH is still a part of this association when they have deemed parents as domestic terrorists, really? Her narrative is as follows, that there is a historical narrative and schools are based on. Two, schools are based on exclusion. Three, curriculum, professional development, et cetera, must permeate the entire curriculum. Four, equity is the foundation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Well, I'd like to ask a moment for the, uh, today is D-Day. Could you give a moment of silence for those vets?
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Brian Moore.
Good evening. I hope everyone can hear me. My name is Brian Moore. I live at 16 Homeroad in Haprow, and I am the president of the HHEA. I would like to thank the board. I would like to thank the board for bringing up the resolution today, I'd like for the inclusion of HHEA in it. I think that was brave to be able to stand up and make a statement, which we don't often get a chance to do. When I started my teaching career, it was just weeks before Columbine. I lived through Columbine, I've lived through Parkland, Sandy Hook, Uvalde, dozens of other school shootings and mass shootings, and all we ever get are false promises. Never again, enough is enough, clouds of thoughts and prayers. This is an opportunity for action. Ask the experts, not the talking heads, not the pundits, ask the FBI, the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives, the International Association of the Chiefs of Police. When you ask them, what can you put in place today that would have a measurable effect on school safety tomorrow? Putting assault weapons out of reach is one of those things. Arming teachers is not one of those things. The Secret Service itself says you should not do that, that it is a bad idea, and this is sensitive to me. At Robb Elementary School, it was for second, third, and fourth grade. My daughter is a second grader moving to third, my wife teaches fourth. The coffins they're putting in the ground in Texas are sized to fit my daughter. Those celebrations of lives of those teachers could easily be my wife. When I have to answer to my daughter, are you coming home today because you're a teacher and I hear that teachers die? That's ridiculous. It is time for this cowardly inaction to be handled. The Constitution of the United States, which I teach, Article III provides the Supreme Court the ability to interpret it. DC versus Heller and McDonald versus Chicago are the key cases dealing with gun rights. You can read Justice Scalia's own words, you don't have to take anyone's credit for it, his own words, that that is not absolute and a well-regulated militia is what's key. It was brave of the board to do it today, and I was proud to stand with them today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Andy Starr, Langdon Avenue, Horsham. I'd like to start by saying I have zero issues with the LGBTQ community, and feel they are being wrongly used to springboard communism indoctrination in this school and across the nation. This school board may feel they are being altruistic to this certain group, but rather it seems you're nothing more than useful pawns for the communist agenda. Of all the egregious indoctrination that schoolchildren must endure on a daily basis, all pale in comparison to the LGBTQ gay pride and transgender indoctrination that is constantly pounded down our throats. When members of this school board have the opportunity to meet up with the schoolchildren in their lives, do you constantly ask Billy if he wants to be a girl, or ask Sarah if she wants to be a boy? Do you constantly tell them that their gender is a product of their imagination? They should pursue a gender of their liking by taking puberty blockers and hormonal therapy. Do you stole the virtues of genital mutilation, we're in the same world, this would arguably be the most heinous of all crimes? I'm going to have to go with no. So then, why do you do this to our children? In the 1930s, when the communists realized they could not infiltrate American society, they switched tactics and concentrated on the schools. The first plank of the 10 planks of communism is the abolition of all private property. This is complete government control, and yes, includes the most important private property we have, our children. The remaining nine planks are how to accomplish the first, with number 10 being government-run schools. The communists tackled academia first, breeding activist teachers that would filter down and affect the early school years, twisting the indelible minds of the youth. Communist ideology looks to destroy the eons-old nuclear family, an ideology that has recently made it to the forefront by the activism of the self-anointed Marxist movement Black Lives Matter, an organization that is heavily supported by Horsham's chief communist activist, Principal Dennis Williams. Another communist ideology is that children do not belong to the parent, rather the community. This is dispelled by Harris on numerous occasions. Communism, Marxism, call it what you like, is the scourge represented by Soviet Russia, Communist China, perfected by the tyrants of North Korea. So in light of these revelations, we are demanding that all LGBTQ indoctrination be suspended immediately, and that the school board instead prioritize teaching the ABCs and 1-2-3s, which is the job you have been hired to perform, not to infuse your unwanted and misguided activism. But even with national and local public outcry, you won't, because like an obedient communist, you have assumed the role of community, seizing control of our children. Therefore, nothing will make me happier for today when the whole lot of you, including you feckless Republicans, are dragged out of here in chains and locked up for child abuse. And in conclusion, I'd like to ask, just for an example, that you're being approached by a criminal with a gun that threatens your life, do you wish in one pocket you have the federal anti-gun ban, or do you wish in the other pocket you had a gun?
Thank you, Mr. Starr.
Dustin Mahaffey, Sol Mullein, Horsham. Tough act to follow there, but, so I just want to talk about the safety issue. I mean, murder's illegal, right? Still happens every day. I mean, people break laws constantly. You know, half of the murders in this country, the guns aren't legally purchased or owned, right? And so last week, my youngest son goes to Blair Mill, and there was this, you know, thing where parents walked around and all, and I believe you were there. The doors were propped wide open, both of them, both the front doors and the back doors. Kids were running around outside unintended. I walked in, nobody asked for my ID, nothing. Want to talk about safety? I literally, I could have had a gun on me, okay? And this was, what, two days after this Texas shooting? So don't talk about safety here. Like, you guys could have done way more. You can do way more. What you did with COVID, I don't want to hear that you can't do this, you can't do that, we need more funding, we need... You guys flipped this district upside down for a political pandemic. When it comes down to our kids' safety, nothing. And that's real, the doors were propped open, anybody could check that. Now, what I also noticed in this elementary school was that we have the pride flag. Why in an elementary school? Are we really, my eight-year-old's in that school, right? So he runs around like Sonic every day. Do we identify him as a hedgehog? I mean, this is the level that we're at now. There's literally schools having kids walk around like furries, and they have litter boxes in the goddamn bathrooms. Is that where we're going to next? Drag queen shows next? This is all really happening, this isn't right-wing conspiracies, and you people are right on that track. Okay, that flag doesn't represent me or my family at all. I have no problem with it, and every single gay person I know is against this crap too. So who are you doing this for? Like, how many young kids woke up and felt like something else, and were like, we're going to change the whole district for them? What are we doing? You're supposed to have the American flag, we're all under that, once you add another flag, you're separating people. You realize that, right? I'm not under that flag, and that represents the whole district, apparently. And I don't even want to get started on the Black Lives Matter stuff, okay? They're fraudulent. I don't care whose button that pushes, they're fraudulent. Okay, we're supporting them, they are fraud, they're criminals, they destroyed cities in the name of victims that they didn't help out. All that money went to mansions and parties, it didn't help any victims. So all this trash that we're pushing on our children, that's what is this trash? You want to talk about the biggest problem in this country? Fatherless homes. You don't want to talk about that because it goes against the trans agenda, right? No more babies, no more men. That's the biggest problem in this country, and I'm also serving you too. I'm serving you too.
Justin Ginnhart, Barrel Stave Circle, Horsham. I can't believe yet again here I am talking about another political issue at a school board. I understand we are all hurting from what happened in Texas, and honestly, I want to say, before I go into my comment, I believe everyone up here has the best interest for all of our kids. So this isn't an attack, this is just the honest truth. You have no right to make a political statement on our behalf. When you sign that, you are not signing it as President Dave Brown, you are signing it as Hattrow-Horsham School District on my behalf, their behalf, everyone. This is a political issue, what you read was political bills, word for word. Everything, even the terms, assault weapons, all of that, that is all political. I've been around firearms my entire life, was in the Army for four and a half years, I actually carry an assault weapon, not what that bill talks about. So I have the experience to know what I'm talking about. I've personally been shot at myself, so trust me, I get it, and I hate bringing that stuff up because I don't want to puff myself up, I'm just saying that I understand what weapons like that can do, I was a medic. So I understand, but as the doctor before had said, we have things we can do, as Dr. Ebbeslag has said, they are working on security protocols, and guess what? There's already a gun ban here, it's a school, it's a gun-free zone. So the one thing that I want to say, and obviously, we've been going back and forth with all of these political issues, is please, you are here to set policy for education. Set policy for our children's education, we can debate that, this shouldn't be debated here. And another speaker had mentioned about the DC versus Heller case and the Second Amendment. Well, I'll bring up the Tenth Amendment, and in our PA Constitution, Article I, Section 21 of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, for our Constitution, the right of the citizens to bear arms in defense of themselves and the state cannot be questioned. But all of that's irrelevant. We need to focus on education, not what political ones. And if you want to send letters yourself as one board member recommended, that's fine, but don't send it in my name.
Thank you, Mr. Ginnhart. Barbara Lewis. Barbara Lewis. Are there any virtual comments, Dr. Taylor? Thank you. Are there any comments from board members or superintendent?
Tara Connor-Halston, I have two comments. As far as our safety, no one is up here that does not want to keep our children...
There's Barbara Lewis? I'm sorry, I didn't see you get up, my apologies.
First of all, thank you for hearing me. Second woman, my name is Barbara Lewis, Ashdover, Lane, Horsham. It was brought to my attention that the board has drafted a letter to be sent to Congress and the Pennsylvania General Assembly in regards to gun legislation. It is my opinion that this board has no right, no right, taking a political standpoint on gun legislation that is protected by our Second Amendment. But I also agree with the woman, and I'm sorry I don't know your name, that talked about mental health. I think we do need more places. I'm old enough to know when they started closing places down for the people that needed it and put them out on the streets, and that's half our problem too. But thank you for listening to me, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Ms. Connor-Halston, do you wish to continue?
Thank you, yes. I just want to say, again, safety is important to all of us, whether we look at it differently or not. We all do care about the safety of children, nobody volunteers all of these hours up here and doesn't care about kids, we just look at it differently. One of my concerns is, most of us all know someone that has passed to a DUI from a drunk driver, yet I don't believe we have anything in place that we would not hire someone with a DUI or fire them with a DUI. There's safety right there, that's a one-ton, two-ton, I don't know what cars weigh, vehicle. It can kill one, it can go into a building and kill many. There are safety things that I believe we should be putting into effect for that, and that can be done right away. Meanwhile, there's already laws, you're not supposed to drink and drive. It doesn't stop people, and it does affect people, and it kills people, and affects all their loved ones. That is one thing I do believe we should work on putting into effect in the policy with hiring and firing, in my opinion. My second point is, I understand President Dave Brown brought up how Mr. Stroop was going to vote even though he was not here. In five years, I have never been aware that we could vote by proxy. Is that in policy, and will that be recorded as his vote even though he was not here? And can all of us do that in the future?
Let me answer that for you. That was not a vote for him, he was, he knew he couldn't vote, and you can't vote by proxy, it was just a statement, okay?
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the explanation.
Sure. As far as DUIs, I know that for bus drivers and things of that nature, that certainly is something that we look at, as it's a condition of their employment, it's part of what they do and how they do it.
I appreciate that, I do believe it should apply to everyone, nobody, I don't think we have many walkers that work in our schools, they drive through our school zones, they drive through our neighborhoods, and a DUI kills people also. There's many different things that hurt our children, whether it be pedophiles, whether it be DUIs, and guns, and knives, there's a million things. There's so many policies that we could affect and change, and I hope that we do, and I do believe that all of us do care about safety, we just look at it differently, and I hope this opens up more communication for options between all of us.
And just to clarify, all employees beyond drivers, every employee has a criminal background check, has to get an FBI clearance to ensure that we are employing people who are safe to be around children. And so that would be an item that would be flagged for any employee.
Does that mean we do not hire someone that has a DUI on their record?
I wouldn't want to say that there has never been someone that's been hired with that, based on the extent of, could have been 20, 25 years ago in some cases, there's historical records, but in general, that could prevent someone, especially with someone with a recent DUI. And it is certainly enough to flag an employee and prevent them from being hired in the school system, ours or others.
Also, if they received that prior to being 18 years of O-H, we wouldn't know anyway.
Are there any other comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sound moved.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.